We have a full house today. Staff-wise, is anybody else working?
Wow.
Good deal. Madam Clerk, the roll call, please.
Dr. Arden Terry.
Here.
Assistant Secretary Robert Uwe.
Here.
Secretary Arden Schaefer.
Here.
Vice President James Sherman.
President.
And President Michael Schaefer.
Here.
Thank you.
It's the time and place now for public comments. Friday's not on the agenda. Anyone for the public wishing to speak? No one will close the public comments and go right to items of study. Number one, the organics tonnage report. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just here to answer any questions. I do want to note that I think it was surprising to see the numbers down for April. We saw the numbers very high in March, you know, because of the rain. That'll be consistent for the next few months, but it didn't happen, so... But still, strong numbers.
Questions for Scott?
I think it's an appropriate amount of tonnage.
Yeah, curious to see again what the weather continues to do. If we keep having snow and hail in May, we may have a decent summer. Okay. Item two, code enforcement report.
Yes, Ed Roberts will be giving his report.
Morning, sir.
Good morning, sir. President Schaefer, members of the board. Ed Roberts, code enforcement officer for the district. I'll be presenting with the April 2000 code enforcement report. For the month of April, six private scavenging investigations spread out to the community at large. Locations were 500 places from Hart Street, 2242 Alvin Avenue, 1946 Parsons Street, 20th Moda Avenue. Finally, 664 Rosworth, all primarily concentrated on the west end of town. I'm sorry, I'm omitting one. 226 Santa Isabella on the east side. Nothing of note. All the folks that were contacted were transitive nature. They were contacted and they did cooperate with my effort. They were released after seeing my admonishment. Trash containers, from the month of April, very consistent numbers. About 105. And I've been averaging roughly around 100, quality and access of 100 over the course of the last year. And nothing really of note to report on that. I did include a map at the end of the report for your benefit. You'll see the locations, four on the west side and two on the east side, north end and south end. Are there any questions from the board?
Interesting to see. My neighbor on Iowa Street, every month, seems like a lot of these are the same folks out there.
No, sir. There are...
I didn't mean to say same people, same areas.
Yes, sir.
That's what I meant.
Sir, I've got my major quarters that I patrol. I normally do what they call a spiral patrol pattern. I'll take the exterior and kind of look moderately centrally inside. There are locations that I know are hotspots, so very visible from major quarters. So I always try to go first and avoid the lesser physical locations.
It's interesting now, like this morning, going from home to office to here, I saw three scavenger, I don't know what they're called, like trucks. And they were full of, one guy had like water heaters and dishwasher. I mean, I don't know if they're scavengers or, they're probably paying for junk-type guys.
Were they CRNR trucks?
They were not CRNR. I did follow a CRNR truck into the building this morning. I didn't realize you could drive one of those things, Dean. I didn't notice you were driving them. But those guys are northern, they're probably commercial guys. I have an alley behind my office and I continually see those guys coming down the alley.
I see the same, sir. Those are all scrap metal collectors. That falls within the authority of the city code enforcement. Most of those folks are there at the beck and call of the residents. It's all a bytip and most folks have a helpful number where they reach out to those folks and service support to them as the pre-pickup of whatever debris that's generated from the house.
It's interesting, well, interesting to me, I'm sorry. We bought a new barbecue last month. And if you bought it at a big box retail hardware place, and they were having this special where if you bought a barbecue for a certain amount, they would put it together, deliver it, to take away your old one. So they must be finding some value in getting that metal as well, you know? Because usually it was just, "Sorry, take it on your own." We donate it on big item pickup.
Yes, sir. Actually, most of these folks will come quick. You can call them, there's redemption value for them. And one of the evidence that we go on the law case, we said, copper, the value of copper about a skyrocket as you find a lot of new construction homes that have been left abandoned overnight. They come back and find some of their wiring missing and etc. Most of those folks are operating within the confines of the law. They're not entering our cards or anything like that. I do keep a cap on just to see if everybody's got a job to live in. But I haven't really had any complaints. Most of our folks are all local folks.
I had a question. Out of curiosity, I know we used to have like three times in a year you could do pickups, you know, large pickups, like 10 items each. And now, do we still do that or do we just call in when we want something? In other words, in June, you have a certain area in July? You don't do that?
It's all, it's all calling.
Now it's called in, okay. So, yeah, so when you have that, do you have any problems with that and the trash cans?
No, ma'am. Normally I oversee complaints from the community. And most of the folks that have called CRNR to get another large item pickup are instructed, place a sort of platinum on the debris, letting the folks know that it's scheduled for a large item pickup. I know the state post Mesa periodically will do the large item pickup collection day to get used to deep trash.
It's green state agents that'll rent a roll-off and spring cleanup or whatever.
And in those instances, you know, we just monitor it in the days after. Just make sure that everybody's got a good bucket and we'll make changes. It happens, so I never really have that much.
Thank you.
I talked to Lisa Manfredi this morning at the coffee shop and she said, you know, she probably like a lot of residents, she sorts of recycle. And then she has a person that calls and they come and get them.
I have a neighbor that every Wednesday night she puts out a stack of newspapers.
I have those.
And it's the same, it's the same guy that comes to the neighborhood, his little white Toyota Sienna. So, there are people that do that.
Another question. Hey, Dean, if people wanted to call you, would you pick up their hot water heaters and metal supplies as a large item pickup?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I'm wondering, does our clientele know that?
The problem with the large item pickups, and Dean knows it better than we do, when we used to do it schedule-wise, the scavengers knew those dates and they were rampant. And now, it's just sort of like a vagamon.
Yeah.
They drive, you see this, Adam. You know, you put something out the night before. I had one, I had to call CRNR the next morning and say, "Hey, never mind. All this stuff is gone," you know? I'm sure you see that.
Is it limited to 10 items for visiting?
I've got a follow-up question for Dean. If, when we, when you pick up those large items, do we get credit for recycling it or not? If they're white goods?
Just white goods?
White goods, we get recyc, yeah, we get credit for white goods.
Do you recycle as much as you can? And that's all of that, it's like, you know, like real product, junk and that kind of stuff. But probably you've got that down to a level where you're able to.
Yeah, I was curious. I was trying to get some more.
You're always looking at the next number, aren't you?
Anything else for Ed?
Thank you, sir.
My pleasure. Well done. Okay. Battery program.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Gina Toriano will be giving...
Gina, the mic.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. The district's outline battery recycling program ended on April 7th. And you have in front of you the final report, which includes the total pounds of batteries collected by each of the 13 schools that participated this year. There was a total of 6,973 pounds collected. And Davis Magnet School won the contest again with 2,749 pounds collected this year. The total cost of the program was $10,299.48. And I've included two graphs that you can see up on the screen, showing the progress of the program since it started in 2013. The first graph shows the increase in the batteries collected by weight over the last four years. And the second graph shows the increase in the number of participating schools. Staff believes that these increases have occurred as a result of increased advertising for the program as well as increased correspondence with school staff to give them updates and to encourage them to continue collecting throughout the year. All of the reward check presentations have been scheduled to take place throughout this month. Those of you who signed up for them, I provided a schedule for you up on the dais, so you should have that. We did one yesterday and we have 12 more to go. So we should be wrapped up by the end of the month. And that's the end of my presentation and happy to answer any questions.
We got a question. Who picks up the batteries from us?
It's a contractor called Mercury Disposal Systems.
And do we get credit for that?
We do. They eventually go to CRNR.
It was really nice to see the increase in spills participating. I mean, it seemed like for the last couple of years it was kind of waning. Of course, I'm especially happy about the one tomorrow morning with my granddaughter. But it is nice to see these, I think that's dramatically charted, show the increase. That's dramatic, right? It's really good to see, so I think it's worthwhile. I think we did good at that point.
You know, just a comment, I think when we change to batteries compared to the others that we were doing, it makes a difference too. I mean, we kind of wore ourselves out on what we were doing before.
I know phone books are going out right now. And I have one in my office, I used to get, because I have four lines, I used to get one per line. And so there'd be four or five phone books sitting in front of my office. Now, it's one little one. And we got one at home yesterday, I think, it was just one little one.
Isn't it just the yellow pages though?
I didn't...
I think it is.
Yeah, I think it's just like a local... With the decrease in home phones, I'm sure we're going to see those go away. It's like, we could do a good job of that. Any other questions for Gina?
Good job.
Forward to presentations, good job. All right, everyone want to get into the dinosaur?
Yes.
The big element in the room.
So Wendy Davis and Caitlin Tran will be giving the presentation. And before they do, I just want to give a shout-out to both of them for a job well done in putting this budget together. They spent many long hours in their office, often in their office after I left. And they're in there working on the budget, putting the numbers together. So I want to commend them for a job well done. And this is your first draft. We will be taking your comments and directions. We will, I think we have two more, we have two more meetings for you. We even have a special meeting set aside if you need us to come back. And then with the adoption will be in June. So I'm going to turn over to Wendy and Caitlin after answering all your questions.
Just to echo the general manager's comment, both of you.
I know it has been, when I use the phrase, I meant, "This is our big thing every year." So that's all it meant. And make a good job. And considering some of us sit on the dais, it's probably...
Is this... Is this a proposed five-year budget?
No, it's a biennial one.
Yeah, because you've got projections out for five years.
I do. And we're going to talk about line numbers.
Okay.
So, so for you, this is our 17th, 18th, 19th, 11th, 12th, 13th, 14th, 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th. So after we've taken into your consideration, we'll have a proposed budget and then we'll present a budget for the off. What we're going to do is we're going to, I'm going to talk about revenues. Caitlin's going to talk about the expenditures. After we pass on the expenditures, I'm going to talk about the solid waste coming, the others, and the cost in the app. And then I'll talk about the CIP. And then after that, we're going to talk about the available fund balance, net position, containers, if you're familiar. We'll talk about what's available, being able to use up on reserves in the solid waste fund, maybe completely separate reserves in the trash fund, in the waste work. And then we're, you know, in question perhaps, we want to stop. And that's some of our daily plans. So to start off with, in the board agenda that was online, it started with the summary of revenues and expenditures, where you can see both. The expenditure, solid waste fund, you can see that we're anticipating a deficit budget of $926,000. And the staff report showed you, or told you, this is our third year adopting a deficit budget to utilize reserves. The first year was 1516, I think the adopted it was $729,000 deficit budget. And a year, a year maybe positive. The second year, it was, this is this year. You know, last year we had about $200,000. This year we adopted a $829,000 budget and we're anticipating maybe a little bit negative. But, you know, we budget based on the revenue that we know and with expenditures in a very conservative fashion. So the probably, this one is not, you can see on that top page. So in looking to the next page, I hear the top is the revenue. So the annual charges, you know, what we transmute to the county. And the... How much? Solid waste is the exact same budget as we did for this year. Because we have been translating in the last, then we're supposed to, and so we're working on that instead of that, at least we are. The, if I translate right to the moment, I would transmute for occupancy at 22, or 21,877. So 21,877. As of March, we paid CRNR 22,518 for a difference of about 600 occupancies. For our reconciliation, our reconciliation says that we should be naming CRNR occupancies of 22,186, which is, reduces overpayment to about 300. The staff have utilized the, what we know right now, if I transmute right now, as a revenue number, that will be reconciled with CRNR and we'll be transmuted. We will transmute minimum under $200,000 of the occupancy. So that's our goal. We're trying to that by...
Wendy, is that overpayment or underpayment?
We're overpaying one, we believe, right now, by what should be 300. But according to what we transmute, 600. So we need to reconcile auto records upwards and their records downwards. So then we give them a list of what we believe in for that occupancy and they're reviewing it and that's in the correct book, what we're telling them.
Is the 21,877 what we're paying for?
That's, that's what I, no, what we're paying is 22,518.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
So the 21,877 is what I run the reports that I would transmute as the number. So we have this problem ongoing, it's been not been organized, it's just been a long process for a long time. It's, we just haven't figured it out, we're not actually doing that.
You've been working, between you and CRNR, you've been working on reconciliations.
Yeah, we had a different structure for months, going through every line item of every record, comparing what they thought the number was, what we thought it was. I had to ask it to the dollar of the ground, people have people not, we do two of us. We always had to go out and actually verifying physically addressants for us, how many units were there, you know, what's the actual addressant according to it. So it's, it's been a big process. And so, like I said, we gave the spreadsheet to CRNR and now they're 22, 23, what we're saying, that we go to the bottom of the group.
What, what...
When's the last time we did a full-blown field audit?
You know what? I don't know that we ever have, but I have tried.
We did, we did before you arrived.
I tried to, I reached out to Hennel Light and Hennel Home to see if they would do it because they had done some others. I reached out to a couple of other people and I couldn't get anyone who would actually, who would have supplied in their power. So, you know, for the most part, our, our records have seemed to be updated. You know, that when we separated from the city, the addresses and things that just got away from us. And there was no way to verify it. But I think we're on my chat now and I think it will be much easier to keep up in the future.
We had one staff people ride with a truck last time to facilitate it. And I don't...
A year ago, we had Ed and Javier go out and just verify one street.
Yeah, I learned about...
And it took them, just to do it, it was Anaheim Street from Nantucket to Hamilton. And it took them three days to do one street.
It is, it's...
And we had them both do it so that we could make sure that it worked out when it came up with a different empty mark.
How do we project all the new building that's going on? Do we supply the, our bins with the three-story places?
Yes, we do.
How do we project?
How do we project?
Because there's a lot of those that are going to be sold and then new residents moving in.
When the new residents move in, they need to call us and come in and pay for the difference between right now and the end of the fiscal year. We can assume that they will be on the next capital. If we can't, then they will pay the end of this fiscal year plus the whole next fiscal year until we can get them on the...
So we don't project that ahead of time?
It's very hard to do that. And, you know, we see plans so far in advance and then there's no telling, you know, the phases and when they will actually come on board. We, staff utilize 100, a growth of 100 units per year as a projection. That's kind of the average of what we've seen in the last couple of years. Some years it was much higher, but it's hard to...
I think it would be hard to project because if there's 200 units for sale, and I'm just throwing numbers out there, and in the first year, 30 of them, I mean, I don't know, you know, dragging down along, especially Placentia where they're building those, I don't see people living in there yet in Motto. So that'd be, that'd be hard.
But I'm thinking more along the 17th Street. It's going to be a problematic problem.
Do you work with the city on it? I mean, do they give you information?
The city collects the plans and we read the plans. So we know what the building is going to be as we permit them. But we don't know when they will become, you know, habitable. So people have to come to us to get the carts. So that's kind of only do that. CRNR will then add it when we call it in and we have it strapped up. If carts dropped off, CRNR will add it to the monthly report that we see. So we have the ability to, they're not getting away with the muster, you know, collecting the entire year. Where they're going to be on our tax rolls, that we can transmute on. That's our difficulty.
Wendy, how did, how did the carts get turned in? Somebody moves.
We never turn in carts. Once you're out of house, then the cart stays forever. So if you were with the original, when we went to carts, you were grandfathered in, you could have the 30 carts if you want. If someone moves into the house and they have 10, then they get to keep their 10. If they move in and they only have one mixed weights for some reason, they want another one, then we'll call CRNR and we'll pop off the second one.
That's how CRNR gets involved with extra carts. Is this budget-based, you probably said this, is this budget-based? Which occupancy number is this budget based on? The trash budget?
That's an interesting question. I mean, that's not at the end, but the big picture is the revenues are using the lowest possible number and the expenditures are using the highest possible number.
Okay, that's good.
I, you know, this is a preliminary budget to show you those, kind of the worst case scenario. I'm always very conservative and I think that all of that, all of this, so, okay.
Interesting, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but that phenomenon when you sell a house, is if you bought a house in January and the guy that moved out left his carts there, you're not going to be on the tax roll until November. So you've got a several-month gap between a whole...
No, you actually, when you bought the house, it was prorated in your...
Yes, girl.
Of course, of course.
So you were paid to them and then you're on, you know...
Shows you how many times I've bought, I mean, we, two, two times. So, yeah, that's right. Because when you buy it, it's a prorated amount, that's, that's right. Okay.
One final thing. So do you feel that it would be necessary or do us any good to do a field audit and...
No, I think that Dean, you know, these drivers looking for dresses and things like that, so I'm sure that their field audit, some of our members that they're questioning to their drivers. So I think they're probably doing that. But it was amazing what you can do with Google now, you know? And so what we couldn't figure out was Google and RealQuest, we could actually, you know, send it out to verify. Myself and Joseph and Val now have gone out and verified it, we do, just to make sure our philosophy is correct. But, you know, mostly it's, I feel like it's pretty good. I'm hoping they don't find a major flaw, but I don't feel like they should, but we've studied that part. The best people have looked at the philosophy of how we're doing it, that we should have caught in areas right now.
I mean, we're within a, less than a 10% margin between them and us, aren't we?
You know, I don't know the percent ends up with something.
Just, I'm, I'm, the number's guessing.
Two and a half.
Yeah, I mean, the number, there's discrepancies pretty well.
You know, for this year's budget, if I wasn't paying the additional 300, then we would have been under budget for the number of households and the total cost for all of it. So even that's the difference, we're giving $25,000 over or, you know, $10,000 right now. So it, it's each about, I think it's $3,500 a month, 2012, about $42,000 a year. So, and we came to agreement a while ago about going backwards and retroactively adjusting. And that was when we assumed we were overpaid. So I'm assuming that Dean is going to hold to that.
Right.
We're going to talk later. Okay. So, on the solid waste, the annual charge, I mean, on the wastewater, the annual charge, this is the first year of the budget includes the last increase for the rate study that was done in 2012. So there is no increase projected in the second year of the revenues. Other than that, all the revenues, the investment earnings are projected a little lower because we're anticipating using reserves. Charges for services are, you'll see later on that they're way up when I show you our reserve balance. But for budgetary purposes, we go with a base number, it's very conservative. So, so you can see that the revenue is... Now Caitlin's going to go over the expenditures, so the kind of high levels of what the changes are for the year-to-year and a couple of new items. I did say in the staff report that there was no new positions added that is listed by personnel, and that's actually not true. We have had an intern position on our org chart for a long time, but we've never had any interest in it. So Scott requested that we actually pay minimum wage for the position and hope so we can get some of the incentive that we have. So the inventory is funded provision now, a hundred position, so that would be the order.
What position is that? What position is that?
An intern.
Okay.
So with that, I'm going to let Caitlin go through the budget. She's asking questions, you know?
Caitlin, thank you.
Before we move down, the numbers I'm seeing on my screen are different than the ones up there.
They're on the second year. Am I looking at the first year? Yeah. You were in the first year.
Yeah.
Use for the world's...
For example, the regular salaries I have on mine are three thirty-eight and five sixty-two.
That might be...
Am I in the wrong year?
We should be looking at that. This is the first year. We have the compensation for the one.
Okay, I'm in attachment B, so I should be in attachment A. Is that what you're calling it?
I'm in the same thing.
Okay.
Operation. Um, for relevant services, professional workers and very separate relations. Um, a new video which allows to... Last time, we did the twenty-two thousand thirty. And fully handled, we're able to do, also in the... Twenty-two thousand, we're hoping to have a waste by college, those new studies, and not go to the... For legal services, things are going up. We do ongoing motivation, starting first year, two thousand and eighteen, we're seeing that two thousand and thirty-five, and then the second year. And we actually have to, every year, that's what we're expecting. Um, just the size of the building is a great... For, um, just water, and electric, so... We're trying to charge rent, giving us rent, um, to the place. And then moving down to the... Why are we charging rent for the solid waste fund?
At the end of the morning, the, the, um, the, the, um, 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 the, um,[787.12]
Over the last two years, uh, we're trying to do the move in some other channels, uh, and from our stores, both openers, uh, to repair, uh, not to, to, to. So that's, that's all in this year. And then the second year, uh, between nineteen thousand and half way, um, that would be the second year for the replacement of the, the, the server and software. Um, and it's all in mid- middle of time, through the building. Um, for the sewer, nineteen thousand, I thought they were hoping to return the, the portable generators in the first year, um, and then in the second.
What, do, um, we bought a lot of generators and, and justified them all, you know, why have another one? Or, you know, maybe you'll get to that later, but...
Well, just do the math. I don't, the, the generator at Nineteenth Street was a permanent generator that we moved over to the Nineteenth, to, um, the generator at the old headquarters.
Yep.
We moved that to Nineteenth Street.
Yes.
So, we agreed not to bring a permanent generator here at this building. We would use a mobile generator, standby generator. We don't have a standby generator dedicated for this building.
Some of the, some of the pump stations are so small that it takes twenty hours to fill them up, which means one generator can be moved, you know, to another location. And you got back to trucks, huh? You know, it just seems like a overkill, but, to me.
My name is Holman. Um, I'm, um, I'm Holman, or, uh, the thing too much. Um, that's what the health has had to do with ways to control the event. It happens every other year, therefore, um, we're going to have this higher than the second year, um, and the first year. And now, um, uh, whatever.
Before you go to CIP, Jim was questioning my, before CIP.
Since we're gonna have solar installed this next year, is that you allowed for that in the budget as far as offsetting the cost? I mean, obviously, if we've got solar, it's gonna reduce the amount of electricity. Is that...
If, it's not, if we did a math, we don't know how much it would be, that, you know, it would be reduced, you can reduce the budget. Most of the utility end up being in their smart time, and so, you know, there's a lot, um, it's a balanced budget, there's a lot of things during that time, but it just seems to be...
On the Sharps program, the, the budget amount, I would assume, are for containers and the things that we give out to, to the public?
Because Gina addressed that, but it's actually a cost for everything.
Okay, so, let me, then I'll just move really to my direct question. Since we're eliminating one of our Sharps people, our collection people, are we down to one now?
One, one for, um, one for medical, and that's for...
Okay, so the one for medical is, is the Rexall on the purple bar. Who are the two Sharps?
Um, Whitefront.
Oh, Whitefront, here on Baker Street? Oh, which is getting ready to expand. They're gonna build a, apparently, a huge building for their new funds. Are we gonna talk about, and I hate to diverge right from the budget, but it's a kind of a personal issue, are we going to replace Stevens?
No, I think that's one of my initiatives, because when they take that Sharps team for a huge, you know, everybody.
So, it's part of your contract negotiation, good call, okay.
Have, have we made a policy decision that we're going to eliminate Stevens? I mean, we talked about it.
No, but they're, they're not there.
Uh, yeah, I'm not, I think we need to have a discussion on that, because I'm not sure that I agree that harming the public, just because you've got a couple crooks running the business, uh, people still go there, the, the business is still open, it, it functions normally, and people who've had a long time usage of the Sharps in that system expect that to be there. And so, we just take it away, you know, but the, the business is working. It, it's still, still functioning.
I, I, I agree with your, your assessment of taking away from the public, but personally, I don't want the district doing business with someone, they were so egregious in what they did, and so underhanded in what they did. Um, they make money off that program, right? Pharmacy makes money off of...
No.
No.
Don't they get some recycling fees for them?
No, they do all, they do this whole, uh, it's just, it's just convenient, it's convenient.
It's very convenient. Rexall is not convenient in any way, shape, or form, unless you live on the East Side. But, I agree with you, Bob philosophically, but they were pretty egregious in what they did, and I don't want our name associated.
Well, egregiousness is in eyes of the holder. I don't believe they've been sent to jail, or fined, or, you know, or whatever.
They've been indicted.
Yeah, so, and they've been indicted.
They're just charges, you know, you know, everyone's innocent, plus we're the guilty.
Yeah.
You should look at the brains. Well, yeah, yeah, I understand that, but it just, I, I mean, I'm, you know, we're getting into...
It's obvious we need to have a discussion about this.
Yeah, you're right.
Well, we need to have it before the budget's concluded, so the budget can be raised appropriately.
I, I don't think the budget really is affected by that.
Yeah, it doesn't have an effect on that. You know, years ago...
So, we can decrease, we can decrease this number?
Um, you know, we would probably leave it the same, just because it's hard to, to manage it. But, you know, years ago, we had, you know, probably seven, you know, pharmacies that participated. And now, with the chain pharmacies, like, you know, Rite Aid and so forth, they don't participate. So, we're just down to the small, you know, non-chain kind of pharmacies. So, it's getting harder and harder.
And we're reaching out to them. Nebula's reaching out to the pharmacies and, and talking about the program, we're gonna send out a flyer, and trying to, you know, just because we, um, we, I made a decision to, to terminate our contract with Stevens, doesn't mean you can't get more, you know, so we're trying. Um, and like, and like I said, there's also the program with CRNR that picks up on the curbside, so there's, there's options out there.
Uh, one of the options, and I brought this up, we have the LAs meeting here a while back, from maybe Nebula's, and looking, if you have Nebula, maybe we'll handle this. I told you that the city of Irvine is planning that thing, didn't I?
No. Yes, but, uh...
They're gonna put Sharps collections in their public restaurants.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That's more of a, that's gonna be a discussion with the city, if you wanna go down that route.
Well, I'm just curious to have information, if you can pick up a little information.
Do the fire stations do that, of course?
Yeah, we, we give them, um, the containers. Um, we give them the containers to pick them up. We also have a drop-off site at the senior center.
Okay, so, um, just to also reiterate that you, the details for the meetings and conferences, um, memberships were all there, and they're adjusted by the two years, based on if they know it's in north or south. So, if you have any questions on those, staff can answer that. So, you've kind of seen the big picture for, um, uh, the budget. She's gone over the highlights of the changes. So, if Malani would go to the, um, solid, um, we're called, I think it'll be, you know, it does, um, pass something? Perfect, thank you. There's also, uh, the three handouts on your desk, so that you can look at them. So, what you have here is, okay, now we're just gonna talk solidly. And we're just going to talk about, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, would you do CIP?
Um, probably, just for the...
We diverted you, sorry.
Okay, so, yes, sorry about that. So, at the very bottom, uh, it's attachment C, right, um, it's, attachment C, there you go, thanks, okay. So, what you have before you is the CIP, um, budget. It starts out with the proposed budget for seventeen eighteen, showing that there's three projects proposed for that year. And above that, you see the projects that, um, the district engineer anticipates not being completed as of June thirtieth. Really, the, um, top three projects are ongoing projects that we're always doing, the manhole repairs, the grade fives, um, line repairs, and the manhole adjustments for the city, where they go out and, you know, they're repaving the street, and they adjust our manholes for us. So, the only, uh, two projects that Rob will not get by the end of this year is the president's force man we have. That will be carried over into the next fiscal year. So, he'll essentially have four projects in the next fiscal year that he'll be working on. And the subsequent, um, budget, which is proposed for eighteen and nineteen, has five projects in second, for the pump station, the president's, is there. Staff estimates that the project is going to cost two million dollars. To repair, um, the pump station. So, with the pump station and the force man, the entire presidents will, uh, cost about three point five million dollars. Um, I'm sure that if you have any questions on the specific projects, uh, Rob would be happy to answer them. I've included, um, what we see in the, the next budget cycle as projects that are, are out there. All this will be subject to change. Rob is, uh, will be starting his, um, sewer master plan, and we will have all the CCTVs in, and, uh, I know that he is working on the grade fives, the phase eights. So, once they have all the CCTVs, and we might do a little juggling with this. But I believe that the sewer master plan will probably take, uh, what did you say, six months? Six months. So, probably by the end of the calendar year, we should have a, um, a go-forward, and so we may amend the second year of the budget, um, or the third year may change based on priorities. So, um, uh, Rob has estimated the, what he needs to complete those projects, based on what costs are right now, for bidding out these types of projects. So, if you have any questions, I'm sure Rob would be happy to answer CIP questions.
Question?
No, I just, a comment. Um, you know, I think the master plan is long overdue. Um, and basically, what these projects total up to is, um, you know, what we budget in revenue, you know, so it's, it's balanced. And, um, I can't, can't imagine that the master plan, you know, would be, like you said, um, you know, directly in line with these projects. I know, I know you have to make an estimate, but we have the asset management fund, which, uh, can fund, you know, substantially more projects when we need them.
Well, I still have more money. Uh, I'll get to that when we do the reserve. I have a little over three hundred thousand in the second fiscal year, but we just, you know, it's a lot of projects going on all at once, plus the ongoing manholes and grade five repairs, um, and the city adjustments. So, you know, Scott feels that, well, this is how we had an entire meeting on going over this, and he thought this is not easy to be handled. But, the funding is possible. It's, it's just getting everything done, and, you know, doing it in a, in a order and fashion.
Well, the master plan should reconcile that need and prioritize the needs, and, and I can't believe there's any way it can match up, you know, with, with, with what you projected, which is what you said. You didn't say it quite like that. You said it might be a little variance.
Well, you know, we've seen that before, where we budgeted things, and then, you know, costs have gone up, or costs have gone down. It's, I think, you know, Rob will tell you that the last year has been a very competitive market for, um, you know, the contractors' bidding, and that we've really benefited from that, so, but it's hard to project, yeah. Okay, so, there's no questions for Rob on this, I do wanna point out that, um...
Well, you, you haven't carried anything over for the manhole cover repairs, which has got to be an ongoing cost forever. Uh, in, in eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty, there's, uh, you know, manhole cover repairs and/or adjustments of manholes. Street improvements go on forever, and so why didn't you just put in anything?
You know, I don't know the amounts to carry over, but because I have contingency available, that if Rob came and said I have, you know, these grade fives, or I need some more manholes, it's within the city manager's ability to transfer funds. I also do have CIP money sitting in the current year sixteen seventeen that is available. It will go back to fund balance. And so, I probably, when, in October, when I do the carryover, I will bring that to the board and say, he's completed this project under budget. I have sixty thousand dollars. I would like that transferred, carried over and transferred to the manholes, or this, or that.
Okay.
I'd also like to point out that, um, the brick manhole rehab, Scott wanted to start working on those, and they'll probably be going on for a couple years, because he feels that, uh, brick manholes need to be coated and, has, prevent earthquake damage and so forth. So, we've got a lot of money still available, and like you said, we're, um, but I will have funds, additional funds carried over for those. I'm just guessing what they are right now.
You meant, you meant the general manager, not the city manager?
General manager, yes, sorry.
Not yet.
I have a question. Hey, Rob, uh, do we have a lot of manholes that still have to be taken care of? Because it seems like we've been doing it for a couple of years.
You, you're talking, I'm sorry, you're talking about the, the, um, manhole covers?
The manhole adjustment program.
Yeah, we, we've been doing very well in that. Um, as you know, Willdan Engineering did an assessment of all our manhole covers and, and rated them, uh, of a grade one to five, five being imminent, um, uh, repairs. And after that report was done, we, we did the grade fives. This past year, Steve and his staff went and evaluated all the grade fours, and noticed, I think it was about a hundred of those that were grade fives, and we got those repaired immediately. So, what Steve will be doing, he, he will, you know, that, that, that study done by Willdan is not gonna be on the shelf and collect dust. Steve's gonna use that as a working document, and he's gonna go out there every year and evaluate those, those manhole covers. Like Wendy said, that we need, if we need to repair them, we, we have the money to do that.
So, that's why we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars?
Excuse me?
Is that why we budgeted a hundred thousand dollars for that?
That one time, we did, yes, because we knew we're, we're coming up with, um, uh, we knew we're, we knew how many manhole covers we had to repair. We don't have, we don't know at this time, because we just finished the grade fours of the grade five. But Steve will go out and evaluate, uh, evaluate them. I don't anticipate, because right now, we're, we're assuming, um, what's left is just the minimum of grade fours and grade threes, and so we don't believe many of them are gonna migrate to the grade five, so it's not gonna be, you know, another hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping for.
Yeah, it won't be that.
Okay.
As part of that evaluation, and, and Rob, you've always talked about the preference for the concrete ring. Do we, the city has to approve that, right?
Yeah, because they, they, that's their thought.
Yeah.
Uh, they are closely considering it.
Oh, so it is still being...
If, if they were to be, you probably, all, um, that's what I would...
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Aren't most of our manholes brick?
No, no.
Uh, none of them, even when you're different, the first thing they know, they're more big, that's the end of the, uh, this was weird, so, I don't think we have a, uh, you can help me with that, whether I said that, or, or...
I read that, and that's where I got, that's where I got that idea. The...
Thirty-five manhole covers, or manhole, I forgot.
Thirty-five?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five hundred, yeah. That's what I'm saying, is a substantial number.
Three thousand, five thousand, and so...
So, there's two-thirds of them are brick.
Okay, so, let's go back to the solid waste, um, do we need the name of that again? It's the, uh, one with the, uh, mash, uh, okay, this is, um, gonna, I'm sorry, I'm gonna get up, and, uh, you're, um, so, what I did here...
That's different from this, right?
Kinda.
That which, um, is...
Yeah, that's the reverse, we're gonna talk about that one. So, these are, this is sort of where my assumptions are. So, what you're looking at is the actual for eleven, twelve, twelve thirteen, thirteen fourteen, fourteen fifteen, fifteen sixteen, and then where we estimate ourselves to be right here, okay? So, let's just talk about where we estimate ourselves to be for this year, okay? So, this is our full, first full year with the organics program in full, but we did not pay the higher organics disposal rate. That only started at the end of September. So, we're three-quarters of the year at the higher rate, and a quarter at the lower rate, because the program was slow in, in getting off. So, right here, this five million dollars is what it costs, what I anticipated at the end of the year, it will cost us to pay for all pickups, disposals, and organics, okay? I don't know if you remember earlier, but I said that...
You mean that includes the organics?
Yes, yes, that includes organic. Um, earlier, I said, if I transmitted my, okay, well, I'll sit down, I just, okay. Um, so, what I told you earlier was, okay.
I think all the boards can hear this fine.
Yeah, we can hear you.
I talked about already, my daughter always tells me I'm the LA Nettor.
We're trying to record.
Okay.
We're recording.
Okay, so, earlier, I told you that if I transmitted my assessments to the county right this moment, I would only get, um, four million, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand. So, that's based on how many occupancies we anticipate with at two hundred and sixteen dollars. So, what we charge the customer doesn't even cover what it costs us to pick up and dispose of the trash and organics, okay? So, then you add on to that the cost for staff, building maintenance, uh, you know, driving around the vehicle, all those things. So, what you have in front of you is kind of a summary of how we come up with the numbers. You see that in the current fiscal year sixteen seventeen, I'm estimating that we'll have roughly by the end of the year, what we should be paying, what I should be collecting, is twenty-two thousand, two hundred. Um, you see that the tonnage down there is, for the regular disposal, we're estimating at thirty-three thousand, one eighty. And then the, um, ten thousand for organics is where we're estimating. Now, the ten thousand for organics may be a little high, since when I did this, we didn't have the April number. I estimated that March, April, May, and June would be nine hundred tons, which is what March was. So, that may end up being a little high, but not much, because I rounded most of that down. So, what it costs per household, per occupant, to provide the program just for the organics and those, is that number at the very bottom. It costs us two hundred and twenty-five dollars per occupant to just pick up the trash. So, if you turn to the graph, you can see that we, we cut it, we add up... Love this graph. Staff, uh, Lou made this for me. This is awesome, because it shows an apples-to-apples comparison of where we are in tonnage in total, regardless of if it's going to the AB facility, or it's going to the, um, transfer station, thank you very much. I was gonna say the dump, but, so anyway, so you can see that our tonnage is continuing to go up, that we're not seeing it now, go down. What staff anticipated when we did the, um, the organic program was that we would shift, our tonnage would go down overall, our recyclable tonnage, because we would have cleaner, better, um, recyclables. So, more would be diverted from the trash, the mixed waste trash, because it would be cleaner and better quality. And we're just not seeing them. Now, factor into that is, we do have growth within the district, you know? We know what our growth is, because we know exactly how many, um, carts we have called and issued. So, we've gone up over the last year a hundred... I thought I had it right here. I, I can get it for the board, but I wanna say we went up a hundred and fifty units over the last year from the beginning of the year. Okay, so, that hundred and fifty units is not, okay, we're in dis, we're in disparity about the beginning number, but the hundred and fifty, let's just call it a hundred and fifty, is an accurate number, because we verify every address. We verify that those people came in and paid us, you know, that amount, so we know that that's a good number. So, it's pretty common, we average out, a hundred units a year is pretty average for us in growth for after years, that, you know, the base of where you grow, and you have, you know, big growth there. So, that's not an outrageous number. So, we're just not seeing that the tonnage is going down, that everything is just going up, but it's not too strictly to want the, what we're waiting for is CRNR to do the characterization, because once they do that, we should see that this should all be totally different, because like you said, when we adopted the organics program, it was with the understanding that that would make our mixed waste have a much higher recyclables, which would divert more from the landfill.
I disagree.
He disagrees, okay.
Can I, can I speak?
Yeah.
I disagree on two items.
Okay.
The last one, you talked about, the fifty-one ninety-seven per ton is on the gross tonnage. It doesn't matter what we recycle, Wendy, you're still gonna have the fifty-one ninety-seven by what goes in the front gate. So, that doesn't matter. We can, we can recycle ninety percent, your cost is not gonna change.
Okay.
Your tonnage isn't gonna change.
Okay.
The second thing that I, I, I question with you, and I don't disagree with you, is, we charge based upon occupancy. You should be charging the, uh, the property owners based upon county records. So, occupancy should always be lower than what you're billing, and that's why there's such a disparity. There's gonna be, there's gonna be houses that are vacant, not, not occupied, okay? Always gonna be more houses than there are occupancies. And that's why this thing is messed up.
Okay, no...
I always think our occupancy should be less than what you would say.
No, no, because we don't care if the house is vacant. They have the potential to have the service.
That's what I agree.
So, unless they pick up the cans, that's the only time we, we would refund them.
You're, we're in the same case, I might be saying wrong, but what we bill you should be less than what you're collecting, because there should be some vacant houses.
Okay.
And that, and it isn't that way now, and that, that's why it's...
No, because what you bill us doesn't factor into that. All you do is add on the new units per...
But if there's a vacant house, we don't believe.
There, there are no tonnages from a vacant house.
But you don't know that it's a vacant house. All you know is that your driver drives down the street.
That's gonna be part of our certification, that's what I'm saying.
How do you know?
That's what I'm saying.
My house in, in Mesa Verde, just as an example, was vacant for six months. How did you know?
We, 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 every month, we're, 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 so, we find the house that we take, and we don't have any, we go, I, I, that's the way the contract is, I just, that's definitely, you know, you need to type it out and that thing, but I, you never have, you never have.
Right, and we never, at the time, for, you never do a scan number. It's only going up numbers, it's only a new addition. So, anyway, having said that, so I agree with what you're saying, that the tonnage should not, would not be going down, because they're weighing it in. So, what we're seeing is, we're continuing to see growth in, in tonnage here.
And one more thing, Wendy, is every city, we have fifty contracts. Every city tonnage is going up right now. It's not gonna go down. So, every city we have is just going up and up and up. And San Clemente is a good example, it's a very similar sized city, very environment, so do like yours is. And that tonnage is skyrocketing.
Yeah. We are still getting the revenue from the property taxes, even if it's vacant, right?
Yes.
Yes, we're still getting the revenue.
You, you have to, though, we, unless you have the cart hold, we do not stop charging or refund. I'm saying with sewers, you know, unless they tap the line, you know, then we don't adjust for anything. Even when they tap the line, a lot of times, they're just , it's a temporary, and they're coming back on, and then, so we don't adjust for that. Okay, so... Okay, so tonnage is increasing, is the bottom line, we're all in agreement with that. Um- Okay, so that's, gee, if you flip to the next sheet, which is the-
Well, Wendy, are you gonna, you know, you've had a pretty significant jump in tonnage by thirty-three percent. Going from seventy-five-hundred tons to ten thousand tons is an increase of thirty-three percent.
We're hoping that there's more participation in the, um, trash. It's, you were talking about from the beginning of the year to the end, but, you know, you can-
No, I mean, I'm just talking about organics, your, your estimate of the organics tonnage.
That I'm estimating this year to be ten thousand and that it's ten thousand, one-hundred in the next year.
Yeah. And last year it was, you're, you have a number of seventy-five-hundred there and you've-
That's last year's actual, which is not a full year. The ten thousand is where I estimate this is actual to be. We're already at almost eight thousand tons, I guess, for, uh, through March. I think I have the actual number on the sheet.
Well, I'll look it, I'll, I'll, I'll look it up.
Yeah, I'd like to provide that in more detail for the board. But so the ten thousand is where it's just a beginning, but we're already over a mountain number through March.
Well, that's, that's what we want though, right? We want that increase.
Well, it's the most expensive part of the, what we pay for.
I know, but that gets our percentage higher for recycling.
Well, yeah, that's a different deal. I mean, we're not gonna make that either.
I know, but, I mean, it's increasing when you get the organics act. Is that right?
We want the organic percentage to go up.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
And you guys are right, it's gonna cost more.
But that, it's not gonna go up based on Wendy's estimate.
So, yeah, if, if all things did the same, if, if it didn't increase in tonnage at all, with the organics kept going up and the diversion, I mean, the, the regular trash kept going down, it would cost us one million, because it's fifty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents for a regular ton. And it's, um, seventy-one fifty for a, for an organic ton. So it's more costly, but it would work for the landowners, it would probably work, yeah. Okay, so after the, um, organics test, um, this is the solid waste, this is, I mean, I know this, but this is what's called the, um, net, perhaps net position, such as, so if this happens, I'm gonna, um, um, where our reserves are gonna be. Can I have you, um, go, sit down to the, towards the bottom? So what this takes is all those numbers that we talked about and budgeted and kinda extrapolated out, and then we can't see the, um, the titles at the top, but your handout has the titles in them. So- If you go to the seventeen eighteen year, um, that's our proposed budget. Just to the lack of that, we'll set the estimate for sixteen-seventeen. So for sixteen-seventeen, the estimate is, uh, the revenue is much higher than the budget that now. Staff has had a lot of, um, development come in, but we, um, we, for the solid waste, um, we, um, we are many of the people, but basically our investments were up, our, um, passive were up, um, and then there was some other revenue that has kicked in, whoa, whatever.
Are you looking at the net position line?
Uh, well, I'm, I'm not at the top of the revenue.
Okay.
So- Again, we anticipate that by the end of two forty, we're maybe in the year, but we actually budgeted five hundred and one hundred. For the next year, because those are not given revenues. So in going down- In the estimated column, we did enough to change the revenues in the bottom. That changes revenues- I'm anticipating that will be five hundred and forty-five thousand dollars deficit, but we are not going to deficit by the eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand. So again, the revenues are higher and, and that's what we anticipate that we will be at the end of the year. So we thought we'd use eight hundred thousand in the reserves, we're only gonna use five. We're doing good. At the very bottom, what you see is the reserves, um, in the fixed assets. That's money that is taken out of reserves because, uh, it's not spendable. And then the operating reserve is based on our new reserve policy of thirty percent cover us during the cash flow dry period, um, during July, August, and September, October. Um, so when you take those numbers and go to the proposed budget, you see that the proposed budget is projecting a deficit of nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety, and that that lowers reserves to one million, nine seventeen. And if you just follow those numbers over, eventually you get to the fiscal year nineteen-twenty and-
Nineteen-twenty-five?
Nineteen-twenty. At nineteen-
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
At nineteen-twenty, um, we're out of reserves. Because if you look at the very bottom number, six thousand, four hun- or six thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-seven, we're done with reserves. So that's where staff would be considering-
The rate, the rate.
Right. So in the second year, the eighteen-nineteen year, as Caitlin mentioned, the rate study in the, perhaps the asset claim, where we need to be. As I showed you, I don't have to recall on one of those earlier pages, it's costing us just to dispose of the trash more than we're charging our rate period right now. We charged two-sixteen, it's costing us just to pick up and dispose of it, two-twenty-five. So that's what we're looking at in the trash fund, is that we will be looking at a rate adjustment in-
What year?
Um, probably effective nineteen-twenty. What staff anticipates is something to, you know, the two rate reductions that we had , um, a hundred years ago, and, and thirteen-forteen, we'll probably recover those, and then something kind of the organic.
We won't totally be out of reserves because there's still money coming in, there was still some of that property tax generation coming in, right?
Well-
Isn't that, if I remember right, when we did those rate decreases, it was that unused property tax revenue that we get, it was going into the reserves, am I making sense?
No, we, we get very little general property tax. That's that two-hundred-and-twenty that I budgeted. So that's included in the revenue to correct the charges, and, um-
So those reserves were built up over the years from charging more than what we-
Uh, yeah, the reserves were actually built up when we were in, we were in a non-recession and staff estimated that the tonnages would continue to rise, and the tonnages dropped from forty-five thousand tons a year to forty thousand tons. And, and so, you know, so then we accumulated those reserves. Um, and, and if we go back into a recession, you know, what staff has estimated here is continuing on with no recession. I don't know when a recession will occur, but it makes a big difference in the tra- it made a big difference-
We can predict that, we're gonna move you to Washington. Wouldn't it be wiser-
I can predict that there will be a recession.
Wendy, wouldn't it be wiser to start adjusting the rates up a little bit in eighteen-nineteen instead of waiting until nineteen-twenty? I mean, a smaller percentage increase instead of one bigger increase.
Yeah, I can see that that might be a way to go, but, um, do you do the top to eighteen-four? And so doing a, a rate study of the best way to, um, do that.
When are we doing the right study, eighteen-nineteen?
Well, we budgeted it in eighteen-nineteen here.
Should we do that in seventeen-eighteen instead?
No, I feel that that would be a decision to do it, that we'll hold the, the years, that we do the likely have to reserve.
Okay.
And because, you know, I just feel that you're very conservative, I always budget the lowest number and the highest of the years, you know, we'll be able to, we get closer to this in the next four years, you know, we can, there's more information to go forward. So I'm hoping that we'll have some more information by the end of next year, if we want to, if we're not the largest team to-
That makes sense.
To be more realistic.
Yeah, because we told the great person we did that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so is there no other questions on the solid base on that? No. Um, the last piece that we now should be, based on our, um, net position. So again, it starts the same way, the fifteen-sixteen is the actual financial basis, so we use for the, the, now, fifteen-sixteen year, and then it's rolling through. So you can see that in this tonnage, there's a lot more reserves down at the bottom. So if you go to the fifteen-sixteen, which is the first column, you're looking at the bottom, our net position is five, forty-five million, seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand, but of that, maybe nine thousand, so that's not spendable, most, that's the money we set up. So I also need the reserves for the ongoing capital, because we, we have appropriated that, we set it towards a, a project, so we set aside that money so we can speak to the project that we started in one of these three years, that's very important. There is the earthplace reserve of one million dollars. There is the, the, for the project, that we're leaving for another reason, except for, you know, and then there's the operating reserve, which is twenty-five percent of the operating budget, okay? So you can see that as of June two thousand and sixteen, our, um, estimated, our reserve net position is about, is now one point one hundred. So this kind of during the stage, I, the budget was sixteen-seventeen there, I estimate we're all in revenue sixteen-seventeen, and we're not spending as much as we anticipate. So you can see that I'm estimating the reserves to increase as of June thirty of two thousand and sixteen to two-point-four million. So when I plug in the balanced budget for two thousand and seventeen-eighteen, you're following along, I know this is like ingrained in my head, but are you with me, everyone here? Okay. So it's a balanced budget, and what that means is, with all the- In the slide, we had a hundred and forty thousand left over, but we always throw it into contingency so that we could allocate it for, if it is needed, or, you know, if we're gonna do something special, still order back any of that on the budget. In eighteen-nineteen, I have three hundred and forty thousand dollars in my contingency account. And that's because, um, the public relations is going away, the litigation should be down, um, and things like that. You know, the thought that I, uh, a lot of them and some other things, that basically I have that money available. So if law came up with a project, I could fund it, you know, we come back to the board and we'll say that, thank you for that. So again, we're presenting a balanced budget for eighteen-nineteen. And, uh, looking forward to projecting nineteen-twenty, um, we start to readjust from the balance reserve, it starts going down, I believe, uh, for example, the balanced budget, I used maybe a hundred and six thousand now, the next year I used a hundred and eighty-three thousand now, so it was less and less in that contingency. That's why the expenditure stood down, so maybe it's an operation, like people are using up that contingency level, um, for that bit. So by the time we get to twenty-one, twenty-two, we can see that when projecting maybe a deficit, um, we're both, um, are done with, um, budget, and we'll be starting to use the reserve. And we have a lot of reserve, I feel, at each other when we're definitely at twenty-one, twenty, because, you know, we're still conservative in our, our, in our, in our expenditure. Um, we have saved a ton of money by hiring the second crew. Uh, they're doing a much better job, we're down in SSOs, we're down in hotspots, we're down with everything, our line is much cleaner, um, it's, it's a reassessment by the board, and we, the contract cost that we remain is, you know, in a way that, um, not only the staff is, you know, once they're able to do everything within house. So we, we saved a ton of money there. Um, having said that, though, we continue to see rise overall in our computer licenses, our computer software, our computer hardware, that we're, you know, we're adding more things to G I S systems, we're, you know, we're automating more things for the, for the, so we continue to see other things to increase. Um, so what I anticipate, you know, overall, with your column on is that we won't be looking at a rate study, we're funding for a while, that we, um, have sufficient funds to fund our projects, we could do more, and that if we, um, in the trash fund, that we will be looking at a, a rate study in the second year of this proposed budget. Any questions?
Yes. I, I just had a comment. Aren't all the decisions the board makes great?
They are.
Yeah.
I know, I just-
Just wanted to clarify that comment that you made, just, just go ahead of it. Earthquake emergency fund, are we taking a million dollars a year or just a one total of a million across?
It's just a million dollars, it just sits there, you know, it's like if you got a bank account and you have, you know, the money aside for your vacation, you know, it just sits there and you, so are no longer just-
Do you think that's adequate or not?
I'm, you know, um, not giving board direction, with my personal admittance, that I don't think that we need that at all, to go back to the old way. When we adopted that, and we're considering the earthquake, we didn't have the asset management fund, so we have the five million dollars now. So it's kind of redundancy, but we have this five million thing over here that we don't use, and now we have this million here that we don't use. So in case of our, of our earthquake or an emergency, we would use that five million. We could either do two things, we could take that million in the sewer fund and move it to that fund, or we could just eliminate it and put it towards something else.
You know, being, being in my line of business, I would probably disagree to a certain extent. I mean, if we have the asset management already, we could put that money into asset management and not, because it's restricted when it's in an earthquake.
Okay, okay, and that's, that's the thing, is the, just from an accounting thing and stuff, um, when someone says it's restricted, you may say it's restricted, it's like your personal account where you set aside some money for a vacation, but your wife comes in and says, honey, the washer broke. And you say, bye-bye vacation, right?
Yeah.
So it's exactly like that. Under government accounting, the only restricted reserves are very limited. They have to be legally restricted, like if you got Measure M money for street repair, that's legally restricted. You cannot use it for anything else, and that would sit in a specific bunch. So all of our reserves, all of our reserves, you know, leave that criteria. So when we combine the asset management, the, um, uh, fixture fees and the sewer fund together, they all work as one, and all of that, that million dollars and that five million dollars, and except for the fixture fees, it's already written on, they, everything goes in one until it all goes into that other circuit.
I, I wouldn't mind entertaining moving that over to the asset management community, but I think, still think we need some kind of disaster preparedness fund. I mean, if we were to have a major incident, then there, there isn't just the cost of repairing the infrastructure, we're gonna have mobilization costs, we're gonna have to have costs for bringing staff in here and doing all the, all the extra stuff, and that's not a huge amount of money, I wouldn't think, but, uh, moving th- this earthquake fund over to the asset management, it's a common thing.
I'd rather leave it with staff personally.
Would you?
I'd personally-
That's something we could discuss.
Yeah.
Thirty-first.
Actually, a million dollars ain't gonna get as much if we have an emergency.
I know, I know. Jim had an appointment, Rob, I'll-
Well, actually, Rob, it's pointed toward you, uh, you know, in the next three or four years, we're gonna, as far as our, um, money we're putting in the C I P, it's gonna diminish, uh, I mean, all, all those pump stations, and they're all gonna be rehabbed, and, uh- And, uh, we're not gonna be putting a, a whole lot, I mean, uh, as much money into that, that part of our budget, is, am I right about that?
Yes. However, with the earthquake, the idea behind the earthquake fund was, we think about... For instance, if, let's just say, the Mesa Drive Bridge, a big crack in the ground, goes right, Mesa Drive Bridge goes down, and that crack goes right through the Eldon pump station. So that's a million dollars right there. And that's what we did, we took our largest pump station and said, what happens if we have a disaster? And it would probably cost us a million dollars to just paste it back together and get it operational. If, if the earthquake was super severe, obviously a million doesn't go across the district very long. But for a small earthquake that happens to take out a pump station, that's the kind of money that we would do.
And realistically, in an earthquake, the underground stuff, typically in earthquakes, we don't see underground stuff having major problems, you see the above-ground structures and things like that, so... I, I like that idea of the model of what's the worst, one worst-case scenario, and using that. But you, you're absolutely right, a million dollars isn't gonna fix more than a couple of pump stations, if you have a big one.
Right, if, if, and if, if you did call it out of the five million, if you didn't have the extra one million, then the minute you had an emergency and needed to, you know, use those funds, you're immediately under the five million. So the minute you have an emergency, you're violating your own policy by being under five million. So if you were to put it in the asset management, you'd probably wanna keep six million in there, not five million.
Fine, yeah, I'd speak a little differently to that. The asset management fund was set at five million dollars, so that when the master planned needs went down to, took it down to two million, we could take time to build it back up to whatever. So it, it's not, it's not a fixed fund. I hear staff talking about it being a fixed fund, and, and we shouldn't go below it, but it was put there so that we could go below it, and we could take care of the assets. I think three or four things, uh, would speak to keeping the, the asset man- the, the emergency earthquake fund. Caltech is revising the, um, the potential severity of the Newport Inwood Fault. And, you know, we've used numbers that Orange County Sand District and whatnot, but I think they're rea- you know, they're in the process of reassessing the potential severity of that fault, and, and probably going to increase it. Uh, you know, we did a project that went through and, um, uh, engineering evaluated how to fix things, you know, how to fix, how to make sure that things stayed put, and, and in, in around the assets that were above ground. Underground, um, sewer damage is minimal, because it'll, it'll usually displace it, and the water will find a way through it. And, and that's more appropriate for the bigger sewers than the littler sewers like we have, but... Uh, and we've done the grade fives, and we've done, you know, we've, we've done a lot of things that were very proactive for diminishing our earthquake exposure. But I, I still think it's a good idea to have that reserve designated as a reserve, because once it gets in the asset management fund, you know, it's just, just something to be used for capital. Uh, and, and then, then it'll look like it's too big, and, you know, anyway, I, I, I would vote for leaving the reserves as it is.
That's where I was gonna add, it's good philosophy.
My only point was, uh, it was more, wasn't, had to do with that.
Yeah.
It had to do more with the budget, you know, if, if we're not being as aggressive, uh, you know, putting in all the, you know, the, uh, equipment, then it would seem to me it would leave a significant amount of money to offset some of the, some of the other expenses.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, probably, uh, we could continue with a certain CIP level.
Well, I know that, but I meant, it's not gonna be to the degree, I mean, what are we gonna do, rebuild pump stations just for the kick?
You know, I'm sure that they would move on to some of the older, based on CCTV, they may end up, um, planning others where they repair or line entire segments. Um, you know, while we'll continue to have, you know, very vibes and very forums, but at some point, you know, doing after the, you know, smaller segments will not be as efficient as, you know, maybe with adding an entire line. So they end up doing that with, uh, the older, based on what they see as a CIP, um, when the CCTV's done.
Can we take a break? I mean, this is very, you know, I'm really enjoying this, but...
Are you, are you about, are you about to be in?
I'm actually done.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was just, one last thing, I was just looking for the ordinance on the, the CIP, and I don't believe that they ask for, I have talked to them, but I can't find it. So we will bring that back when we have a discussion.
When is our next, we have a special meeting for May thirty-first?
Our, our regular board meeting, yeah.
No, thirty-first, you have a budget meeting.
Our next meeting is to discuss the budget, the regular board meeting, and then we schedule a special meeting instead. Does it have anything on the agenda for the thirty-first? We thought it'd be better if you have a, maybe a, a special meeting to do that.
So the budget's not coming to us for adoption until June. So what are we doing in May? Did I miss that the other day?
We're going to...
You're gonna present the preliminary budget to us in May?
Yeah, we, you know, based on the, the comments that I got from the board, um, you wanted to discuss the solid waste rent. Um, you also wanna talk about, um, well, the earthquake fund, management asset fund, so we can all bring that back for your, um, um, regular board meeting discussion. And if you don't have any changes to the budget or anything, then we'll bring it back in, in June for adoption.
And then that special meeting will be used.
Just in case, it's a place for, yeah.
Um, just personally, again, back to what we said at the beginning of this discussion, both of you have done, it's, it's easy when you have a budget, you can understand, number one, at least, that I think I can understand. And you presented it in a way that fits with the philosophy that I think that comes out of this board. So to both of you, and whoever else worked on it, congratulations, because it, it, it's easy to not have to sit here and pick everything apart, because the information you're giving us is relevant and fits to our philosophy, I think, so, good job to both of you. Really good job. Okay, so then we're gonna take a two-minute break, so that some of the elder members of the board can relax, and then we're gonna adjourn to closed session.
Yeah, and if I could just make a few comments on the closed session, Mr. President, so for the public's, um, information, we're gonna go in the closed session to, uh, discuss, um, the board's decision to possibly acquire, um, a property at, uh, two-two, five-two Fairview Road, and, uh, that property, if, if the board seeks to acquire that property, it'd be used to store, um, uh, district equipment. And I've also asked, um, our appraiser to be in that closed session with us.
Uh, again, after the break, we're gonna adjourn to closed session, conference of real property negotiations under Government Code five four nine five six point eight, for the property at twenty-two fifty-two Fairview Road.
We'll just go in the closed session now, now that we're...
Can you go to closed session now?
Yeah, we'll go to the bathroom.
Well, I'm going to reconvene us to open session, uh, under the, uh, Real Property Negotiation Government Code five four nine five six point eight. Uh, the board has given staff direction to negotiate terms of the property on Fairview, twenty-two fifty-two Fairview. Okay? Any other oral communications or director comments? Seeing none, we'll adjourn this meeting.
Good job.
I gotta go. Karen?